...in a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution, the Constitution, the Constitution under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as a law. A moment of silence. Thank you, you may be seated. Madam Secretary, roll call.
William Caldwell.
Here.
Gary Simpson.
President.
Marlon Milner.
Here.
Olivia Brady.
President.
Derek Perry.
Derek Perry.
Sonya Sanders.
Here.
Linda Christian.
Here.
Counsel, would someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the council workshop meeting held on February 18th, 2015?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. I'd like to inform everyone that council met an executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss legal matters and personnel. First up on our agenda, I would like to call up Mr. John Waters.
Good evening. I appreciate the time I'm being given here tonight, and if I could ask the chief of your fire department to join me. My name is John Waters. I'm an executive fire officer currently serving upper Marion Township as their chief fire marshal, emergency manager, director of codes enforcement, and whatever else the board of supervisors says I am on any given day. I'm here tonight to honor my friend, Chief Tom O'Donnell, for his service to our organization, to the county, and it served. I have just followed him as president of the Montgomery County Municipal Fire Officers Association. In 2007, a number of appointed by municipalities as opposed to elected by individual fire companies, fire officers identified a gap in representation of fire safety issues to the county. We were meeting casually, but some visionaries, including Chief O'Donnell, wanted to formalize our organization to address our needs. In May of 2007, with Chief O'Donnell as one of the founding members, the Montgomery County Municipal Fire Officers Association was formed. Our purpose is to provide a forum for sharing ideas, concerns, and suggestions regarding the provision of fire protection to our communities, to promote improved communications between the county and municipal fire protection leadership, to provide a voice for the Montgomery County Public Safety Department to our respective municipalities, and to identify long-range planning needs for fire protection within the county. Chief O'Donnell served as our first vice president from May of 2007 till January of 2011, at which time he took the helm and took over as president until January of this year. During that time period, Chief O'Donnell was instrumental in the restoration of the Montgomery County Fallen Firefighters Memorial, which serves as an everlasting tribute to those firefighters who've been lost and, due to the inherent risk involved in ours, could be lost, their lives protecting others within the county. As you know, Montgomery County has embarked on a multi-year, multimillion-dollar upgrade to our radio communication system. It was Chief O'Donnell who proposed a joint radio committee consisting ourselves and our volunteer counterparts. As a result, we produced an 18-page white paper signed by both Chief O'Donnell and Chief Kowinski, forgive me, giving that to the county, providing a unified voice on what we believed our needs were. Were there differences? Yes, there were. But I've been taught that if two organizations or two people debating an issue agree on everything, then one of them is superfluous. That said, through the leadership of both groups, consensus was reached. Combating large emergencies within the county takes a large number of qualified individuals who can address the complex needs of emergency operations. To that end, Chief O'Donnell was also a founding member of the Montgomery County Incident Support Team, who, when requested, will respond to any emergency throughout the county to assist the incident commander in running a safe and successful emergency response. If I could ask the members of our organization and the members of the Narsetown Fire Department who are assembled to stand, please. Webster defines an asset as a useful thing, person, or quality. Chief O'Donnell has been and will continue to be an asset to the municipality of Narsetown, the county of Montgomery, and to the Montgomery County Municipal Fire Officers Association. And in this forum, I would like to thank him for his service and present him with a small token of our appreciation, and I hope that you appreciate him also. Chief, thank you.
Thank you. It's a surprise. I wish they would have picked better weather. There's a lot more things on the agenda that need to be more important, hiring some new police officers, getting some more protection on the street, but it's truly an honor, and I'll thank this, take this on behalf of every firefighter here in the county. Thank you.
Chief O'Donnell, I too wish the weather could be better. However, I am really happy for you, and congratulations. I think it's a well-deserved reward.
Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Counsel, I'd like to request a motion to approve Resolution 15-111, appointing Joshua Keenan and Joshua Samuels as police officers. Mr. Solicitor.
Roll call.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Madam Secretary, roll call vote, please.
William Caldwell.
Aye.
Gary Simpson.
Aye.
Marlon Milner.
Aye.
Olivia Brady.
Aye.
Derek Perry.
Aye.
Sonya Sanders.
Aye.
Linda Christian.
Aye. That motion carries. Counsel, I'd like to request a motion to approve the Civil Service Resolution certifying Richard C. Klausser as certified for promotion to captain.
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Solicitor. Madam Secretary, roll call vote.
William Caldwell.
Aye.
Gary Simpson.
Aye.
Marlon Milner.
Aye.
Olivia Brady.
Aye.
Derek Perry. Sonya Sanders.
Aye.
Linda Christian.
Counsel, Vice President Sonya, if you'll join me on the floor, we can do the oaths of office.
D.
D? Oh, I did skip that. Counsel, I'd like to request a motion to approve Resolution, I can't see the numbers, appointing Richard C. Klausser as police captain.
So moved.
Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
William Caldwell.
Aye.
Gary Simpson.
Aye.
Marlon Milner.
Aye.
Olivia Brady.
Aye.
Derek Perry.
Aye.
Sonya Sanders.
Aye.
Linda Christian.
Aye. That motion carries. Now, Counselwoman Sonya, if you're Sanders, if you can join me on the floor so we can do the oath of office. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, and Chief Talbert, of course, we can't do it without you. Well, I know, but I have to say his name out loud. Okay, and do you have someone that you would like to hold the Bible for you?
My Bible.
Okay, and if you can stand next to him. Yeah, and right hand on the Bible, correct? And if you'll repeat after me. Okay. Please repeat after me. I, Joshua Keenan, do solemnly swear.
I, Joshua Keenan, do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Charter of the Municipality of Narsetown.
The Charter of the Municipality of Narsetown.
And the laws of Pennsylvania and the Municipality of Narsetown.
And the laws of Pennsylvania and the Municipality of Narsetown.
I will discharge the duties of my office.
I will discharge the duties of my office.
As police officer for the Municipality of Narsetown.
As police officer for the Municipality of Narsetown.
Police Department.
Police Department.
With honor and fidelity.
With honor and fidelity.
I will uphold, obey, and enforce.
I will uphold, obey, and enforce.
The laws of Pennsylvania and the Municipality of Narsetown.
The laws of Pennsylvania and the Municipality of Narsetown.
Without consideration to a person's race, color, or sex.
Without consideration to a person's race, color, or sex.
Religious creed, sexual orientation.
Religious creed, sexual orientation.
Age, national origin.
Age, national origin.
Ancestry, handicap, or disability.
Ancestry, handicap, or disability.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
I would like to announce Joshua M. Samuels. Have someone who's going to hold the Bible for you? Okay, and you stand here, right hand on the Bible, left hand. And do you want to swear on that?
I swear.
Okay. If you'll repeat after me. I, Joshua M. Samuels, do solemnly swear.
I, Joshua M. Samuels, do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Charter of the Municipality of Narsetown.
The Charter of the Municipality of Narsetown.
And the laws of Pennsylvania and the Municipality of Narsetown.
And the laws of Pennsylvania and the Municipality of Narsetown.
I will discharge the duties of my office as a police officer.
I will discharge the duties of my office as a police officer.
For the Municipality of Narsetown Police Department.
For the Municipality of Narsetown Police Department.
With honor and fidelity.
With honor and fidelity.
I will uphold, obey, and enforce.
I will uphold, obey, and enforce.
The laws of Pennsylvania and the Municipality of Narsetown.
The laws of Pennsylvania and the Municipality of Narsetown.
Without consideration to a person's race, color.
Without consideration to a person's race, color.
Sex, religious creed.
Sex, religious creed.
Sexual orientation, age.
Sexual orientation, age.
National origin, ancestry.
National origin, ancestry.
Handicap or disability.
Handicap or disability.
Congratulations. And now we'd like to call up, well, I'll say interim Captain Klausser to become Captain Klausser.
I, Richard Klausser.
I, Richard Klausser.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm that I will support.
Or affirm that I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Charter of the Municipality of Narsetown.
The Charter of the Municipality of Narsetown.
And the laws of Pennsylvania and the Municipality of Narsetown.
And the laws of Pennsylvania and the Municipality of Narsetown.
I will discharge the duties of my office as a police officer.
I will discharge the duties of my office as a police officer.
For the Municipality of Narsetown Police Department.
For the Municipality of Narsetown Police Department.
With honor and fidelity.
With honor and fidelity.
I will uphold, obey, and enforce.
I will uphold, obey, and enforce.
The laws of Pennsylvania and the Municipality of Narsetown.
The laws of Pennsylvania and the Municipality of Narsetown.
Without consideration to a person's race, color.
Without consideration to a person's race, color.
Sex, religious creed.
Sex, religious creed.
Sexual orientation, age.
Sexual orientation, age.
National origin, ancestry.
National origin, ancestry.
Handicap or disability.
Handicap or disability.
Congratulations. Klausser.
I, Richard Klausser.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm that I will support.
Or affirm that I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Charter of the Municipality of Narsetown.
The Charter of the Municipality of Narsetown.
And the laws of Pennsylvania.
And the laws of Pennsylvania.
And the Municipality of Narsetown.
And the Municipality of Narsetown.
I will discharge the duties.
I will discharge the duties.
Of my office as police captain.
Of my duties as police captain.
For the Municipality of Narsetown.
For the Municipality of Narsetown.
Police Department.
Police Department.
With honor and fidelity.
With honor and fidelity.
I will uphold.
I will uphold.
Obey and enforce.
Obey and enforce.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
And the Municipality of Narsetown.
And the Municipality of Narsetown.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
To a person's race.
To a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap.
Handicap.
Or disability.
Or disability.
Congratulations. Go and shake your hands with anyone else. basis, congratulations, it couldn't go to a better officer, congratulations. Counselwoman Sanders, any announcements?
Yes, Madam President. The first announcement is the ARB tax aid. Get help with your taxes. The ARB Foundation Tax Aid is available, free to taxpayers with low and moderate income, with special attention to those 60 and older. For contact information, call 610-278-5100, or email eavillaco@gmail.com. The second announcement is for the Fourth of July Parade. We're looking for organizations, businesses, family groups with a theme, musical groups, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, or sports teams, in addition to local companies, vehicles, old, new, antique, veterans, organizations, or decorated vehicles, and church groups and floats. All things should be in good taste to participate in the parade. And I have an announcement that isn't on here. This Saturday, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., San Augustine of Hippo is having a Black History program. All is free and light refreshments afterwards. Anyone else have any announcements? That concludes the announcements.
Thank you, Counselwoman Sanders. Madam Secretary, anyone sign in for public comment?
Yes. Al DiGennaro.
And Mr. DiGennaro, before you go, if you can state where you live, your residency.
Yes, good evening, Madam President, members of council. I'm Al DiGennaro, and I'm deputy general counsel for JP Mascara &amp; Sons, and I'm here to comment on the contract that I signed, as are two other individuals from our company, our Sam Augustine, who spoke to you at your work session, whoever sees our municipal bidding department, and Pat Mascara. Our preference would be to make our comments as you are on the agenda item unless you'd rather have me speak, rather have us speak now. I see it's the last item on your agenda, that might be more appropriate.
What is your preference?
I'd rather wait till it comes up on the agenda so it's timely.
Okay.
Okay, so would my colleagues. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's it.
Any for communication?
No, just the two gentlemen that are with him, and that's it.
Okay, no communication either, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, no.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. We'll move to the public safety portion of our agenda. And Mr. Jones, before we request a motion for the pawnbroker's ordinance, who would it be that will give us just a little background?
The police chief can give you a background.
Okay, Chief Talbert, if you can give us just a little summarization of this next item.
Very good. So this ordinance is to put in place a system in which we can discourage people from taking stolen property to pawn shops. One of the things that we've noticed, not just here, but I think throughout the country, that if you don't regulate secondhand dealers in pawn shops in some way, it becomes an easy avenue to take stolen property. We've made several arrests here in Narsetown based on stolen property located at our pawn shops. There have been a couple of investigations at the county level where they've done the same. Many times throughout my career, I've experienced people stealing property, either through some sort of theft or burglary or even a robbery, and taking the property to a pawn shop. So we had our detectives research this whole thing and look for what some other communities are doing to prevent that particular type of problem, and came up with the ordinance that's in front of you. In a nutshell, the ordinance is a way to electronically link all the pawn shops and the secondhand dealers to a centralized database where we can see exactly what property is taken there, and then cross-reference that property with our records.
Thank you very much, Chief Talbert. Counsel, any questions or comments? Counselwoman Brady?
Thank you, Madam President. I only have one question regarding the registration or the fees that some of these shops need to pay to enter into this agreement. I was concerned as to whether or not these fees would be considered onerous by small business shops who do have these secondhand stores. Could we explain a little bit about that process?
Sure, Chief.
The fee is based on what it is going to cost to put the ordinance in place. It's something that I don't see as ultimately going to be onerous for a business that's making very often a substantial amount of money off of selling secondhand property. We looked around to see how the fee structures work in other municipalities, and essentially they do the same thing, where the price or the fee structure is based on what it costs to implement the ordinance itself.
Now, my understanding that the little mom-and-pop drop-off used stuff commission kind of things wouldn't fall under the same category, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Counsel, were there any other questions or comments? Counselman Milner?
Thank you. Chief, to the point made by Madam President, can you clarify, because when I saw the phrase "secondhand," I thought of thrift stores and the like. How does this, and this may be a question for a solicitor, how does this not apply to such places? Is it?
So, the difference would be, if I can take something and get cash back, then that's going to apply. If I'm taking something to sell on consignment or something like that, that's not going to fall within the confines of this particular ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? Is there a council rep who would like to make a motion relating to this ordinance?
Seven.
All those in favor?
Needs to be a roll call.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Solicitor. Madam Secretary, roll call vote, please.
William Caldwell.
Aye.
Gary Simpson.
Aye.
Marlon Milner.
Aye.
Olivia Brady.
Aye.
Derek Perry.
Aye.
Sonya Sanders.
Aye.
Linda Christian.
Aye.
I will lean on you again, Chief Talbert. Of course, it's not a detailed thing, but just a summary of our next action item, which is related to the eligibility list.
So that's related to the two officers that...
Six on the Civil Service Commission Resolution certifying.
So we're asking you to certify the rest of the Civil Service list in the event that we are able to hire additional people if the department gets to the point where we're in hiring phase again.
Okay, and as of today, you're not in the hiring phase.
We are not. With the two officers that we just sworn today, we're at 67, we're at our full complement, and I hope to stay that way.
Thank you, Chief. Counsel, any questions or comments? Counselman Milner?
Thank you. Chief, that certification is good, how long, into perpetuity, or?
I believe it's a year. I believe it's a year, yes.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? Counsel, I'd like to request a motion that we approve the Civil Service Commission Resolution certifying six candidates on the eligibility list.
So moved.
And because it's a resolution, it needs to be a roll call.
Just one, too.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Madam Secretary, roll call vote, please.
William Caldwell.
Aye.
Gary Simpson.
Aye.
Marlon Milner.
Aye.
Olivia Brady.
Aye.
Derek Perry.
Aye.
Sonya Sanders.
Aye.
Linda Christian.
Aye.
Thank you. We have a similar motion related to entry-level firefighters. Counsel, I'd like to request a motion certifying... Counsel, I'd like to request a motion certifying four candidates on the eligibility list for entry-level firefighter.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, Madam Secretary, roll call.
William Caldwell?
Aye.
Gary Simpson?
Aye.
Marlon Milner?
Aye.
Olivia Brady?
Aye.
Derek Perry?
Aye.
Sonia Sanders?
Aye.
Linda Christian?
Aye.
That motion carries. Our next item falls under the Code Department. In accordance with the Harp Rules and Regulations, all certificates of appropriateness are required to be certified by municipal council, and there is a request that municipal council approve Harp certificates of appropriateness to 46 East Jacobi Street and 630 West Main Street. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Counselwoman Sanders, do you want to take us through our Finance Department and Public Works sections?
Sure, Madam Secretary. I'm sorry, Madam President. So, I would like to entertain the motion for, I'm sorry, I would like to entertain the request for Resolution 15-113, updating the authorized account users to remove the currently listed authorized user and the staff currently in charge for the position of the Finance Director and Assistant Finance Director as authorized users. All those in favor?
One of order.
I'm sorry. Councilman Milner?
It needs to be a... We didn't have a motion, but can we have the municipal administrator explain before the motion? And it is a resolution, so it will need to be a roll call, actually. Madam Vice President.
I'll ask the Finance Director to walk counsel through it, please.
This request is for an E-Trade account that is currently held by the municipality for some investments. Currently, the only authorized user is someone who was on staff, I believe, four finance directors ago, and unfortunately, currently, we are not able to obtain any information on the account until those authorized users are removed and it's updated for current staff. In September, when I joined the organization, I sent a request for updating, instructions to update the account. I received a call about two weeks ago in response to that letter, and advising me that no further information would be provided until we provided a resolution updating the contacts in order to manage the account.
Thank you. I just have a question. So what you're telling me is that either we have this E-Trade account, and we're not able to determine how active it has been, or who has been using it, or we are not necessarily in a position to do trades?
Actually, we do receive monthly statements that tell us what the activity, there is no activity on the account. The investments that are held by the account are static with gains and losses as the market flows.
I see. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilman Milner?
Thank you. What is the amount in this account?
It's approximately $30,000.
Thank you. Oh, I have a follow-up question. Given the explanation about how this was a gap-closing measure, having this account was a gap-closing measure against an insurance policy that we no longer had?
There are retirees that were covered by a state policy upon their death that would receive an insurance benefit, and there are still balances available to these individuals upon their retirement and their death. However, the premiums, as I understand it, have been stopped, and the policies are frozen. This account was established as a stopgap to supplement additional premium payments.
Does it close the gap?
No, we have still, we still have liability as a municipality for retiree benefits.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Caldwell?
I take it you're, once we get control of the account, going to move that into like a dedicated funds account, or?
With counsel's permission, I will present a request to, once we get authorized access to the account, to put the funds in a more stable environment.
So that concludes the questions. So if we could, Madam Secretary, move the motion forward for the resolution for the roll call?
William Caldwell?
Aye.
Gary Simpson?
One of order.
I'm sorry, resolution.
There needs to be a motion placed on the floor.
There needs to be a motion in a second.
Okay, I would like to request the motion for the Resolution 15-113.
So moved. Second.
Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
William Caldwell?
Aye.
Gary Simpson?
Aye.
Marlon Milner?
Aye.
Olivia Brady?
Aye.
Derek Perry?
Aye.
Sonia Sanders?
Aye.
Linda Christian?
Aye.
And the ayes have it, that motion of the Resolution 15-113 carries. Moving forward with the Public Works, I would like to entertain the motion for the bid to award J.P. Mascara for a five-year contract with two option years for residential, and municipal solid waste collection, recycling, and disposal.
So moved.
She made a motion to approve.
She made a motion to approve. Say what?
What?
Yeah. Hold on.
I'm sorry, what was the point?
She made the motion in a second.
She made a motion to approve.
That's what's made for the second. Second. And then we'll hear the presentation.
Right.
Yes. Okay, so all in favor?
Wait, there was a mo, you made the...
I'm sorry, I made the motion.
You made the motion that there's a second.
For the second time. And it was seconded.
Okay, then.
Discussion.
There's all the question and discussion.
Right. And then you'll call Mr. DiGennaro up, I believe.
Okay, Mr. DiGennaro, for comment, please.
Thank you. Good evening again. As I said, I'm Al DiGennaro, Deputy General Counsel for J.P. Mascara &amp; Sons. I have a couple of gentlemen here also, and I will be brief. I know counsel discussed this thoroughly at the work session, and heard the input of the administration and the recommendation, and I just wanted to comment if I could on a couple of items. First of all, the bid solicitation or bid specification is very detailed, and has very specific information, and I think your administration should be applauded for the bid specs that it put out, and sought competitive bids, and I think the evidence that it was very detailed and a good submission was in fact, you received five bids. And frankly, we were pleased to submit what we believe to be an excellent bid, and provide the...
Counselwoman Christian?
For all of the updates that we add to the website and/or new...
The proof is in the pudding that we are the low bid the whole way across the board, and with respect to alternate number one, which I believe is on your agenda for award as recommended by the administration, the current cost for those services is about $296 per household per month, and under our bid, it'll come down to $228, not including some administrative costs that the borough would obviously, that the municipality would obviously be entitled to add on. So I would submit, in terms of pricing, it's an excellent bid for the counsel to consider, and it's an excellent bid for your residents. And I'm sure your solicitor has weighed in that the bid we submitted is a responsive or responsible bid, and I have no doubt that our bid is the lowest responsive or responsible bid, and we're delighted to be in a position to receive the award for five years, and look forward to serving the borough over these next five years. I know there's some discussion at the last meeting, and I just want to bring up Sam Augustine for a moment or two. He's equally familiar with this, to answer any questions, as well as make a few comments. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Sam Augustine, Director of Sales with Mascara, and we've been pleased to be your vendor over the last five years. We've had an excellent service record here. We had a meeting last week, of course, with most members of counsel and the staff to go over the changes with the current bid, how it'll help the community with recycling, how the toters will keep the community cleaner. You'll also be able to put trash outside the toters in closed containers that we will pick up. You'll also have a 64-gallon toter for recycling with a different colored lid, so everybody will know what the recycling program is. We'll also have information with the toter explaining the recycling program, and we've also offered in our bid what I feel to be the most comprehensive incentivized recycling program, in that we are not only offering monies back for every ton of recyclables that the borough does generate, and we expect the borough to double the recycling in the next contract, but we've also incentivized the recycling in that we're going to have a program that will award homeowners in Norristown with reward points weekly for the amount of recycling that the community generates. They'll be able to use these reward points to earn coupons to local businesses, so it'll also help local businesses, such as Dunkin' Donuts, perhaps pizza shops in the community, Elmwood Park Zoo, et cetera. So it'll generate business in the community, and will incentivize recycling. So I'm here to answer any questions you may have. That's basically the upcoming bid in a nutshell, and just to further add what Mr. DiGennaro said, we are not only, this is the first time you've added disposal, you were previously going to the incinerator, you've added disposal to the mix, and your price is going to be going down considerably, not only now, but also over the next five years. Your price is guaranteed for the next five years, and you'll have two option years after the next five years. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them, and we're looking forward to, of course, the new contract.
Counselwoman Brady?
Yes.
Thank you, and thank you for that explanation. I did have one question. It was actually a concern that was brought to me after the workshop, and that is the ability for older people or people with disabilities in handling the toters. What in your experience has anybody described any difficulties in handling the toters once they're filled with trash?
Actually, the 64-gallon toters, we have vast experience with the 64-gallon toters. Larger toters sometimes can be very difficult to handle, especially for elderly people. But the 64-gallon toters, I wish we had one here tonight, actually, for you to see. They're not, they're not that cumbersome. Again, they're the size, they're actually double the size of a 30. However, with the wheels and the amount of trash going into them, they're easily tipped backwards, and senior citizens can handle them without a problem. They can handle them without a problem. We have them, we have them in neighboring township in Lower Providence. They have one for trash, one for recycling. They also put out extra trash aside the toter, if there is extra trash. Of course, with senior citizens, there's not a lot of extra trash, but they find them very, very easy to handle and very, very convenient. So for the trash and recycling, they're going to be, they're going to be a great addition.
One follow-up question to that. As you know, Norristown has a lot of areas that have front steps on the service walkways.
Yes.
Are the toters strong enough to handle somewhat being abused, bumping down the steps?
The wheels are very sturdy. We've had contracts, and here there's going to be 96, well, there's going to be actually about 20,000 toters, 96/40 for trash, 96/40 for recycling. We've had contracts where, I'm very familiar with, that we have, I believe it's half of 1% are damaged over the course of a contract. You know, the wheels are very sturdy. If anything, you know, the wheels at times can break, but only after, I mean, these things can be used for 10, 15 years.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Milner?
Thank you. Can you comment on what your customer service response is going to be when trash and/or recycling is not picked up?
We've kept, we've kept detailed records over the last five years with not only, not only calls that have come to our office. We record all calls on a daily basis, and I know not everybody calls, but we've kept detailed records with calls, and we've had, we've had, I believe, somewhere in the neighborhood of 540 calls over five years, which is, it's amazing. We've only been recording in our office a couple calls per week, and based on the number of collections that we have, and we have, again, we have around 20,000 collections a week. That's really a...
Mr. Augustine, that was my question.
Let me finish, sir. Let me finish.
I would like you to directly answer the question of, what will be your response when the trash or recycling is not picked up? I don't want you to finish, I want you to answer my question.
No, I'm going to go through what I need to say. The next thing is, is your supervisor, I mean, our supervisor also is in the town at all times, and the Director of Public Works does receive calls also. He receives, and he mentioned at last week's meeting, which counsel attended, most of counsel attended, that he only receives two calls a week, and when he receives any call, he talks to our supervisor, and our supervisor does follow up on any calls that do come to our office. So between the calls that our Director of Public Works...
How are you going to follow up?
Our supervisor takes the calls and then follows up with...
In what timeframe are you going to follow up?
We follow up, we follow up that day or within 24 hours.
So within 24 hours of a call that trash or recycling has not been picked up, it's going to be picked up?
Yes, if it's valid. Some people don't put out the trash on time.
Mr. Augustine, do you think I'm asking you about invalid calls?
No, I'm not saying.
Okay, then don't comment on that. I don't appreciate it.
Yeah.
I think you know why I'm asking you this question.
Counsel, let's move forward. Counselwoman Sanders?
Councilman Simpson?
Mr. Augustine, correct?
Yes.
Again, thank you for coming out last week.
Sure, sure.
We talked about, we discussed a lot of those specific instances with regards to what complaint calls may or may not have come in, how they would be handled, who was in place to actually be able to deal with those specific situations.
Right.
And I thank you for your forthrightness last week, as we discussed those specific things.
Right.
So again, I look forward to being able to continue to work with you, with Mascara, for the next five years with the options. Unfortunately, I will not be here the next four years with two-years options, but I think that the direction that staff had has gone with regards to what they put out for bid, how they're going to be able to handle, and how we're going to be able to handle our trash going forward, as well as our recycle, the programs that have been set in place by Mascara, as well as staff, and how you, the two of you had worked on this arduously, so that each area could be addressed, and that each citizen will actually be able to have the kind of trash removal that everyone sought to take place. And I think that is very important.
Yes.
So as you stated, I would, one, like to thank staff for the work that you've done putting this together, also the work that you have done to help save the taxpayer money in this process. I think those things are very, very important. So again, I applaud you, and I applaud staff for the work that the two of you have put together to, for you to answer our bid, and then to also, to also provide the kind of services that we in Norristown, one, need, and greatly appreciate it. So again, I'd like to thank you for that.
And deserve, and deserve, and this is a joint effort, this is a joint effort, and we realize that, that we want to keep this, we want to keep this community as clean as we possibly can. Yes, sir.
Counselman Caldwell?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Yeah, I just wanted to run back to Counselwoman Brady's question real quick, where she talked about the toters and, you know, the running up steps and things. There are a couple of... There are a couple of areas, and there aren't a lot of them, but there are a couple of areas where folks don't have access to a back alley, which is where most of us get that. Has any thought been given to how that's going to be handled with the toters? I mean, my, I guess my fear is that I don't, I don't want to see a lot of stuff on, in front of houses.
Yes.
And I don't know whether you've had an opportunity, I mean, you run into that now, I'm sure, but what's the plan to address that?
It will be best, it will be best if everybody tries to use their toter. That would be best. But with the situation that we have, we're going to be using the same type vehicles. They're going to have, also, they're gonna have toter dumpers, but our guys are going to be able to handle the toters by hand if they need to, and also they'd be able to handle loose trash. So if somebody put out loose trash, okay, and it's a problem with their toter bringing the trash through the front of the house, we can handle that loose trash. The main thing is, is keeping the streets clean.
Yeah.
Now, I'm not sure in every case they're gonna work, but in most cases, they will work. Most cases, they will work.
Yeah, no, and I think it's a great idea, mind you, I just-
Right.
-I know there are a couple blocks that, that come to my mind that, where there's, it's perpetually an issue that they've gotta-
Sure.
You know, there's trash out front.
Right.
So thank you.
You bet. Councilman Perry.
I have a question for you and then a question for staff. With the toters in the other areas, are we gonna have the same toters as Lower Providence and so forth?
Yes, they'll be the exact, well, you know, they should be the exact, might be a different manufacturer, but your, your specification declares what the, what the toter has to be, the, the size of the toter, the thickness of the toter, et cetera, but they are going to be the same toters, same size, and the recycling toter will be a different colored lid, and it's gonna have the insignias of recycling on it.
Okay.
So they'll be the same toters.
All right. My second is just a suggestion. Currently, we have a Norristown app, and, you know, we can, we can blame Mascara for, you know, stuff like that. We're only here on one side, and that's the community side, but, you know, they actually have workers who are from Norristown. So what I would suggest is if we can come up with a collaboration of where Mascara's, if people don't have their trash out, that we can take pictures and actually have it for the app, that it would be a trash app, so we know what they're doing wrong and what we're doing wrong on our side, if that makes sense.
It does. I think, I think it's something we can definitely look at. The app is built to be able to, right now, to take pictures of problems and issues and get them in, so I think we can collaborate and make sure we can get it directly to them.
I would suggest that, since, you know, we have a big problem with-
Right.
-people saying like, let's just say you got 25 trash bags in front of a house.
Right.
You're only obligated to bring four. Well, boom, you can take a picture, send it to the application, now we can say we're in compliance, and, you know, we can handle it like that. I think that would be better. Or if someone doesn't have their trash out and you go there, you know, obviously, we can knock all of this other stuff out.
Right.
But I think that would be the best suggestion, so we have a better rapport of what you're doing and what we're doing as a community.
Right. It's a very good idea.
Councilwoman Brady.
Pat Mascaro just wants to say a few words, if he could.
Councilwoman Brady has a question.
Thank you. Just one quick follow-up question to Councilman Perry. One of the things that we had, there were two things, actually, that we had discussed at the workshop that I wanted to see if you had follow-ups on. One was, there was a brief discussion about residents who may not be compliant with the trash regulations and what would happen to that. And the other question was a question that President Christian had mentioned about refrigerator magnets?
And number, number one, we talked about it at the, at the, at the meeting, and we have, you know, and now that was brought up about the, about the app, but we are, we, we do it now. If there's a problem with a stop, we, we put a ticket at the stop that, so they know they're in violation. It has, it has different reasons that it would be in violation. Obviously, we're going to be concerned with the recycling, too. We're gonna pick up the recycling, but if recycling is contaminated, we're going to have to explain to somebody that, you know, this is contaminated recycling. Okay? Now, we found, we found in Pottstown that they have 64-gallon toters for recycling, and as I explained last week, that, that recycling is, is fairly clean. And we expect, we expect the recycling here to be clean, and so I don't anticipate a lot of problems, but if there is, there will be, there will be tickets left behind, so the homeowner will know what the, what the issues are. Secondly, I thought the refrigerator magnet was an excellent idea. We are spending a lot of money with these, with these mailers that we, you know, we send out. It's a lot of money with the, with the US Mail. You know, we feel that's an excellent idea, that if we sent out the information on a magnet, a good-sized magnet, put it on that refrigerator that, with our, with our number, what the recycling, what the recycling regulations are, what the trash regulations are, that it would be, it would be longer lasting, and the people would be able to refer to it much better.
Thank you.
Yep.
Madam Chairman?
Sorry.
My name is Pat Mascaro. I am the President of JP Mascara &amp; Sons. I didn't come down here this evening to give you a speech or anything. I come down here to talk to you from my heart. I want you to know unequivocally, the borough of Norristown is an important, valued customer of the Mascara family and JP Mascara &amp; Sons. If we haven't demonstrated that over the last 20 years, I apologize for that, but I can tell you, there is genuine commitment at Mascara for the borough of Norristown. Now, I've resided my whole life in Lower Providence Township, but as far as I'm concerned, our home community is the borough of Norristown, 747 Chain Street. That's where my grandparents, when they came from Italy, 747 Chain Street. My Uncle Tony had a grocery store for 20 years on Marshall and Green. This town is important to Mascara, and we try to demonstrate it every day in the streets. When you're picking up 2.5 million of these in the course of a year, and you have the human element, you're gonna have the propensity to have some issues. We are not perfect. Only the guy up there is perfect. We are not perfect, but I want to tell you one thing, we are responsive. You call Mascara, we're not going to debate issues with you, we're going to respond. And I've heard some really good input come from council here, and you, you did an excellent job, whether it came from staff, council, whoever put this thing together, did an excellent job. You now, for the first time, have disciplines in this program. This program will give you economy, efficiency, and will be environmentally sound, and you will save money. You will be getting bigger checks back on these recycling grants. We have a supervisor in here all day while we're performing the service. We're working from right across the bridge in Bridgeport, and it's no secret, if you call Mascara and you ask for Pat Mascara, he will call you back. There's a lady in this town that called me very nicely and told me that our truck knocked her fence over, and our Director of Risk Management denied the claim because she felt that the, the attributes were not there for liability. The lady explained herself to me in a civil, polite, professional manner. I went down and got the fence fixed. That's how it's done when there's rapport and when there's good faith. We need, we need to deal with each other in good faith. Norristown is a very, very important community. They deserve, they deserve a high-caliber waste management and disposal and recycling program. We have tried in the past in innumerable occasions to be a substantial, silent friend in the community of Norristown. I give you my commitment, we will continue with that commitment. I thank you for the opportunity to work here.
Thank you. Any other questions? Madam Secretary, could I have a roll call, please?
William Caldwell?
Aye.
Gary Simpson?
Aye.
Marlin Milner?
Aye.
Olivia Brady?
Aye.
Derek Perry?
Aye.
Sonya Sanders?
Aye.
Linda Christian?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Safe home. Finished. Thank you very much, Councilwoman Sanders. Counsel, I'd like to request a motion to open the agenda to take care of a legal item.
So, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we will open the agenda. Counsel, I'd like to make a motion to appoint the law firm of Sean Kilkeny LLC located, as a matter of fact, before I even make that motion, I want to take that back. This is related to Mr. Kilkeny's law firm having some transitions. And before I make the motion, counsel, are there any questions or comments? Councilman Caldwell.
Yes, Madam President. I don't know whether it's the right time to say this, but I will. I just wanted to thank Mr. Kilkeny, who has, is gonna be moving into Norristown as, as our newest business opening, Mr. Kilkeny?
Yes, I signed a lease with 17 East Aries Street and anticipate moving to Norristown April 1st.
You know, you've sat there for a long time and talked about Norristown and talked about, you know, what a good place it is and, and how it's ready for revitalization and how important Norristown is to greater Montgomery County, and I just wanted to thank you personally for putting your, your money where your, your talk was and, and being a, you know, and when it came to opening your own practice to moving it into town. That means a lot to us. I think that shows a, sends a very strong message out to the rest of the community, the rest of Montgomery County and beyond, that Norristown is worth investing in. Thank you.
Counsel, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to appoint the law firm of Sean Kilkeny LLC located at 17 East Aries Street, Norristown, effective April 1st, 2015, provided all rates stay the same.
And that's his municipal solicitor, correct?
Does every choir of roll call vote, Mr. Solicitor?
It does not.
Okay, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And now I have to open it up for public comment. Anyone willing to make a comment on this item? Carl, wanna make a comment?
No.
Okay, that motion carries. Counsel, I'd like to request a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second. Meeting adjourned.